Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November CalSTRS Board Meeting. We are starting out with the Teachers Retirement Board this morning. And first off, we need to take Pearl.
Great. For the Director of Finance, Ms. Pearl.
President.
Mr. Keely.
Here.
Mr. Tang.
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto.
Here.
Ms. Hendricks.
Here.
Mr. Gunning.
Here.
For the State Treasurer, Mr. Henning.
Here.
And for the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Juarez.
Here.
Jefferson Bradford, you have a quorum. May I make a comment on public?
Please.
The CalSTRS Board meetings are live web streamed, video archived, and available to the public on calstrs.com. Individuals who wish to address the board should wait for the 10-minute public comment period at the end of the agenda item the speaker wishes to address. For comments not pertaining to a specific agenda item, there will be an opportunity for additional statements at the end of the open session. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to comment. However, if there is not enough time for each speaker to have three minutes, the timing will be at the discretion of the Chair. Please be advised while criticism is protected. Abusive language or other disruptive behavior that goes beyond protected speech and impedes the meeting's progress may result in the termination of further comment and/or removal if the behavior continues. To protect the privacy of speakers under the age of 18 who wish to address the board, only the first name and affiliated organization may be provided, but other personal identifying information such as their last name, age, or school may not be shared. And since the September Teachers Retirement Board meeting, CalSTRS has received four emails from members regarding questions and feedback related to the new MyCalSTRS portal. One email from an inactive member expressing concerns about not being able to refund their defined benefit supplement account.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. With that, I would take a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Without objection, we will approve the agenda. Okay, seeing no objection, that's approved. Are there any public comments on the agenda?
No public comment for this item.
Thank you. Okay, with that, the board will be dismissing into the caucus room for closed session for approximately 15 minutes. See you soon. Good morning, everyone. Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Teachers Retirement Board. For those of you who weren't here yesterday, we did open the meeting yesterday, so we are going to start right in today. Catching up a little bit from yesterday, we did not show the teacher videos, so we would like to start off with that today.
I mean, I keep teaching because it's the greatest thing that I could possibly imagine doing. When a student comes to the commercial music program at Wood Creek High School, I ask for them to have some experience on an instrument, and then I try to teach them the rest as much as possible. At the first level, they learn how to rehearse in a group, how they come to rehearsal prepared, knowing their part. And then they learn how to set up the live equipment that we use, live sound equipment, and how to run the soundboard. In the second level, we do more music production, so they're learning how to deal with DAW, so recording software. We talk about popular music song form, how to compose sections and arrange them into that form, and they actually notate, and then they have to mix it and master it and still continue on with, you know, performing live. Then when we get to the advanced level, hopefully, if I've done everything right, they're mostly self-contained, so they come in and we do some music theory in the beginning, and then they have several different things that they're balancing.
I love music a lot because the thrill of playing on a stage in front of people, especially when it's something that you've created, and being able to share that art with an audience who almost always cheers for you is one of the best feelings ever.
Mr. Vaughn's very, very tenacious. He's always striving for something. He used to play guitar, but now he plays cello because he wants to learn something new and reach those different aspects of what he wants. His program is truly just providing us with opportunities with things that we weren't normally able to do, like events like we're doing today are super big for us because it integrates us into the world of music in a different way that we wouldn't be able to do without him.
Coming to work here, I think that I was surprised to know that the most important part of this job, the most exciting part of this job and the thing that I look forward to the most is meeting the kids and getting to know the kids and the relationships that I get to develop, even more than teaching the music, which is the whole reason I got into this.
We want to personally thank Mr. Vaughn for being someone who can give us opportunities that can last us a lifetime of members, so this is a reward for him.
I never thought that I would have that kind of safety in my life, but having that benefit of knowing that when I retire and I can feel safe for the rest of my life, my wife and I both, I'm grateful. I've been a nervous traveler all my life, so I haven't gone places that I want to go. Like, I really want to go to Vienna. It's like my dream, and so I would like to travel through Europe and, you know, see where all my favorite composers were, and, you know, that would be ideal. But that's the great thing about this job, is I have summers, you know? So I can go do that stuff during summer, and then I never have to stop teaching.
That looked like a lot of fun, didn't it? Okay, before we start, I wanted to say thank you to everyone in attendance today, especially everyone who had to travel Veterans Day, sorry about that, to get to the meeting yesterday. In honor of Veterans Day, I would like to extend a special thank you to our educators, CalSTRS staff, and others who are veterans. Your dedication and service to our country are deeply appreciated. A brief review of our agenda today. Our Chief Executive Officer will share some of our current activities and achievements. We'll hear from system actuaries about the 2025 Review of Funding Levels and Risks Report. This is an important report, annual report, that assesses the soundness and the sustainability of the system and measures our progress toward achieving full funding by 2046. We also use that report for many decisions that we make as a board. We will also get a report from staff about Benefit Connect, our new pension administration system. The launch of Benefit Connect was and continues to be one of the most important achievements for our organization. I am very grateful, as is the whole board, to the project team and the CalSTRS business areas who have dedicated so much time and effort to the launch, our ongoing efforts, and to meeting the needs of our members. This includes financial services staff, as well as benefits and services, and especially our contact center and member service centers. I'm proud of our team and pleased that this month, benefit checks were delivered on time, and we continue our record of never missing a payment. I also want to especially thank our members for their patience throughout this effort. There have been a few bumps, but our contact center wait times were a little longer than usual, yet our representatives are getting good ratings and are having good conversations with the callers. Our wonderful CalSTRS members are kind and friendly, and overall, everyone is giving each other's grace, and we thank you for that. And with that, we will go on to number seven, item number seven, our Chief Executive Officer Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to highlight a couple of things out of the report. First of all, in October, we launched a new board staff working group on technology governance to help define the board's role in overseeing technology with a particular focus on artificial intelligence and other emerging technologies. The group includes both board members and executive leaders and is supported by Mosaic Governance Advisors. So we've been having a lot of conversations, and it's really exciting. As part of this work, the group is engaging with global pension organizations and academic experts to understand leading practices in technology oversight. The group's deliverables will include recommendations for how the board should structure its oversight of technology and AI, an educational curriculum to strengthen board knowledge in these areas, and supporting resources to sustain that ongoing learning. Preliminary findings and recommendations will be shared at the January 2026 board meeting. So I'm looking forward to all of what we're learning and looking forward to share that with you. And I thank Denise Bradford and Harry Keely and Michael Gunning for participating in the board part of that learning experience. The other piece I wanted to mention is our Pension Two, the milestone that we've reached there. As of October 30th of 2025, Pension Two has surpassed $3.2 billion in assets under management, serving more than 37,000 participants. I remember when I started in the COO world, we were at half a billion dollars. So it's grown quite a bit, although that's been a while ago, but it was 12 years ago, but that's quite an advancement, for sure. This growth reflects the success of our education campaigns, our member outreach, and personalized financial support initiatives. The milestone underscores CalSTRS' commitment to helping educators build financial security beyond their defined benefit plan and advancing retirement readiness through supplemental savings, which is an ongoing conversation that we have with them on an ongoing basis. So the last thing I wanted to mention was our SBMA update. In October 2025, we issued our first quarterly supplemental benefit maintenance account payments totaling $197.3 million to about 184,000 retirees and beneficiaries. That's about 54% of all CalSTRS retirees and beneficiaries receiving an SBMA payment this quarter. The October payment included roughly 48,000 members who qualified for SBMA for the first time this year, a direct result of continued high inflation. These newly eligible members saw their purchasing power drop below 85% of their original benefit. The average quarterly SBMA payment overall was $1,071, slightly lower than prior years due to the large number of new and smaller payments. For fiscal year 2425, California inflation was 3%, marking the fifth consecutive year it exceeded CalSTRS' long-term inflation assumption of 2.75. SBMA payments are issued quarterly in October, January, April, and July, and are designated to help maintain the retirees' purchasing power. Newly eligible members were automatically enrolled and received notification from CalSTRS confirming their eligibility, and no action was required on their part, so we're happy that that all went out smoothly. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, you may have already heard, but I wanted to mention it publicly, is that one of our long-term system actuaries, Rick Reed, has announced his retirement. This will be his last board meeting because he selected a date of January 20th as his last day to work, so I just want to congratulate him. I know David's going to talk a little bit more in-depth about his working relationship with him, but I just wanted to recognize Rick as well, so thank you.
Congratulations.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay, did you want to say anything about the meeting calendar for number eight?
Yep, that's the next item.
That's the next item.
Yep, I'll start with that. The proposed 2627 board meeting calendar is in the packet. We got it completed a little bit early for you to have at least one first reading. I think we have a pretty good, solid schedule outlined. We looked at all of the different competing meetings and responsibilities that the board members have. We also worked with the Department of Finance on some of the conflicts that they are challenged with every year relative to budget and other important boards that they are participating in. So the board has six standing meetings. The first in July of 2026 will be an offsite, and that's where we do a business review on education components, and then September, November, January, March, and May. And May is where we hold the annual elections for the Chair and Vice Chair. So the primary meetings, five meetings, will be held at CalSTRS headquarters in West Sacramento, and then the offsite is held either in Northern California and Southern California. We rotate that. The Client Advisory Committee meetings will continue to be held virtually before each of the board meetings. So this, again, is just the first reading, and then we will bring it back in January for adoption if there's no conflicts. But if you have any suggestions at this time, we'd be happy to consider those, or if you want to send me any other conflicts that I could talk through with the Chair and Vice Chair of the board, and we can try to work it through any of those. And that's it, unless anybody had questions now.
I just want to request that everyone please really take a look at that and send emails before January, maybe before the holidays, so that we can, if we have to make any changes, get that done in a timely manner.
Well, paid attention to the January 27 month. There is no meeting scheduled. It's moved over to February, so just kind of take a look at that as well.
A good point, thank you.
Are there any public comments?
All right. I would say none.
Thank you. We'll go with none. That brings us to item number nine, education item on compensation policy. Crystal will start us off.
Good morning, members of the board, Crystal Turco, CalSTRS staff. I am joined today by the board's primary compensation consultant, Mercer, Josh Wilson, and Susan Lemke, as well as the board's investment consultant, Steve McCourt from Nikita, and the chief investment officer, Scott Chan. We are going to talk to you all today about your compensation policy and provide you a brief overview. I am going to cover some background in history about the policy itself. Josh and Susan are going to talk to you about your current compensation program and also talk to you about trends in the marketplace. Scott's going to make the connection between talent, risk, and returns, and then we'll have time at the end for questions, and then just talk to you all about next steps. As background, why do you have this authority? You have this authority because of Prop 162. Prop 162, otherwise known as the California Pension Protection Act, was passed in 1992 to give boards like CalPERS and CalSTRS authority over administration of their systems, investment decisions, and actuarial decisions as well. Before Prop 162, there were concerns that there could be interference with pension fund management, specifically prioritizing political or other budgetary goals over retirees' financial security. Prop 162 was a response to that, ensuring fiduciary independence. This led to the modification of the Education Code by way of SB 269, which now explicitly allows the board to set compensation for very specific roles like the CEO and the COO, CIO, and also be guided by market principles and fiduciary responsibilities, not constrained by general civil service salary constraints and parameters. In 2006, your compensation policy was adopted, and it has three primary focuses: market competitiveness, strategic talent management, and governance. Because CalSTRS competes with large institutional investors and private sector firms for talent and to remain competitive within that marketplace, the board uses compensation benchmarking against comparator groups that include U.S. and Canadian pension funds, corporate plan sponsors, and private asset managers. This ensures CalSTRS can offer competitive packages aligned with the market, which is especially important for investment staff, who are critical to generating returns above benchmarks without taking unnecessary risk. Although you have this authority, you operate under a very structured framework guided by your Compensation Committee Charter. The board also reserves the right to modify or rescind compensation policies as needed, ensuring flexibility and accountability in its approach. Outlining some of the key activities that you hold exclusive authority over, you adopt and revise the compensation policy to reflect revolving or evolving fiduciary market and operational needs. You ensure that all compensation decisions are tied to long-term objectives like sustainable investing, internal asset management, the collaborative model 2.0, for example, and net zero commitments. You delegate program administration responsibilities to the CEO while retaining strategic oversight of the policy. You use external consultants like Mercer to inform your policy design and benchmarking, Nikita. And you develop annual compensation work plans and follow structured timelines to review executive pay, incentive outcomes, and policy revisions. You also have the very important task of performing critical functions relative to the Chief Executive Officer and Chief Investment Officer roles. For example, you annually set performance criteria for both roles, you do performance appraisals for both important roles within the organization, and you also review base salaries for both positions on an annual basis. And then just to outline some of the compensation milestones, I mentioned previously, in 2006, the policy was adopted. In 2010, you modified the policy to update your principals' market positioning goals, and you also added performance triggers to the incentives. In 2012 to 2013, you made some structural updates to the policy, creating a new comparator group for the investment positions. In 2017 to 2020 is probably the time you made the most modifications to the policy itself. You added new positions to the policy, specifically the Chief Operating Officer and the Chief Financial Officer, as well as established the Senior Investment Director and Senior Portfolio Manager positions to really support the long-term collaborative investment model. In 2020 through 2022, you started discussions about incorporating a long-term incentive into the compensation policy, but ultimately decided not to enact a long-term incentive. And at present, you have engaged with your compensation strategists to do a comprehensive review of your policy. And with that, I will turn it over to Mercer. Do you want me to click for you?
Thank you. Nice to be here today. As we're looking here, it's an important part of your policy to define the philosophy and the mission that you're trying to get to from the group. So when we're talking about the desired staff profile, you have high-quality executive management and investment staff, you're trying to generate returns that exceed your benchmarks without taking excess and unnecessary risk, and really focus on serving members and beneficiaries. Your overall pay positioning statement is that you want to pay in line with a competitive market, which means being at the 50th percentile of the compensation comparator groups. And those compensation comparator groups do vary somewhat between the different types of roles within the organization, which is common. When we're looking at the investment staff specifically, it's a blend of large and complex institutional investors, which includes U.S. and Canadian public pension funds, corporate plan sponsors, as well as private sector asset management organizations. So it's a blended peer group of all of those different perspectives for your investment staff. For your executive management staff, you have a compensation comparator group that has a blend of public and private sector asset management organizations. There you have a 67% or two-thirds weighting on the public pension fund side of things and one-third weighting on private sector firms. And so then when you complete, you have McGloggan completes the benchmarking review for you, and that informs your salary ranges. So salary ranges are typically reviewed every two years following a compensation review, but they can be revalidated through special studies at other times, so you have that ability if certain roles are of a concern. Base salary ranges have specific minimums and maximums. The midpoint is targeted around the median of those comparator groups, so that market data feeds in directly to the salary structure and how roles are slotted in the salary structure. And then you manage compensation within the established salary structure for your roles. And then between the reviews, ranges can be adjusted to align with market movement within the compensation comparator groups as necessary. So you do have that authority to make adjustments mid-cycle. You're not limited at those two-year points. Any questions on that part? When we talk about salary increases, so it's a two-step process, so the salary ranges are moved based on the market data, and you approve that movement, the salary increases themselves are discretionary within those ranges. And that covers positions under the Education Code 22212.5. They're determined each year and are effective at the beginning of the new fiscal year. But the board and/or the CEO can approve off-cycle increases as necessary. So you do have that option, again, as part of your policy, to make off-cycle adjustments as necessary. When we talk about authority, the board makes adjustments for the CEO and CIO compensation. The CIO recommends, and the CEO approves, adjustments for investment staff, and the CEO approves adjustments for all other covered executive management positions. And then salaries can be adjusted within the prescribed ranges by annual amounts, generally not to exceed 10%, but that is not a hard and fast limit. But your policy states that you consider the current salary, position and range, overall performance of the incumbent, internal equity, retention, recruiting experience, as well as the state environment, are all factors that you can take into account when making decisions around salary increases. Any questions on that part of the policy? On the next page.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, please.
I was just curious. I mean, I'd love to hear since, you know, your opinion. Is everything that you just kind of reviewed with us, is that sort of best practice around compensation policy, or I'm just curious?
It is. I mean, you have a well-thought-out policy. One of the things that we'll be doing as part of our next steps in conversation and as newer advisors to the board is following the end of the cycle. We'll be having individual conversations with board members to review the policy and see if there's any refinements that you would want to make, and we'll come back and march with any recommendations there. But you do have, it's a well-defined policy that does lay out the different elements and how compensation decisions are made.
Mr. Keely?
Thanks. Specific questions around the current policy speaks to the 50th percentile of our comparative group. In your view, working with other funds around comparative groups and targets of the 50th percentile, do you see the, it seems the average. If we wanted to be a little bit more ambitious, say, you know, we really believe our team should be paid in the top quartile, we want to be. Is that something that you would opine on and look at the implications of that for us?
We could certainly do that for you. And a couple of different ways that you can look at the competitiveness is both looking at what makes up the comparator groups that you're looking at, right? So if we say 50th percentile, the next question is 50th percentile of what? Or 75th percentile, 75th percentile of what? And so both of those are important, interactive elements, but it is not uncommon for organizations to target above the median, depending on the size and complexity. And then also, once the incentives are included, that is a place where we often do see if there is excellent performance, that you might be receiving compensation in that upper quartile.
And I can follow up separately because I don't want to take too much time at this meeting this morning. I would like to understand the trade-offs. I would like to understand the trade-offs of having the 50th percentile versus saying top quartile and its implications, as well as the other variable that's used, which is two-thirds, one-third, two-thirds of public, one-third of private, simultaneous and along both tracks, saying, let's really compare ourselves more three-fourths to publics, one-fourth private, but let's move towards a higher target, top quartile, et cetera. I'd like to have a conversation at some point and understanding the trade-offs of that and the implications, and whether or not it would meaningfully help us in our objectives with the policy and our staff on a forward-looking basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I see no other questions.
So here, just for your recollection, is the current salary structure that you have and how different roles are slotted into that salary structure. And so just wanted to have that as a reference point. So this is the current structure that's in place.
Thank you, Susan. And I'm going to talk a bit about the incentive plan that you have because you do have the second component of your pay packages is the incentive plan. You have a philosophy that says pay for performance. And I think to the question asked earlier, I think from a positioning standpoint, you want to decide how much of it is fixed and how much of it is dependent on the results, right? I think that's part of being a public entity is having that balance. So you have a pay-for-performance philosophy that reflects total fund performance and asset class performance. Obviously, as the emphasis from the investment side shifts, so would the incentive plan to match that, right? So the incentive plan wants to reward the strategy, not vice versa. So we want to make sure that that's in sync. Your philosophy is also that there should be more quantitative evaluation than qualitative, all of which makes sense and I would say is a best practice across other organizations. Your incentive plan has about 225 participants in it. It requires outperformance. The max outperformance is 40 basis points. A basis point, to remind you, is give or take $40 million. So that would result in about $1.6 billion of alpha added to the stakeholders of California for a maximum payout. And it is a three-year plan, which is, I would say, best practice. That's a balance of investment returns, taking into account the market swings, but also employee lifecycle. So three years is what we typically see in a bunch of companies. Now, if I could ask you to go to the next slide. Here's a slide of the opportunities for the participants in the plan. The way you have it expressed is as a maximum, and those percentages are a percentage of base salary. So, for example, the CEO has a maximum opportunity of 150% of salary, and obviously, the minimum is zero. We would view that as a target of give or take 75%, sort of halfway there. And then depending on performance, that's how it gets paid out. And you can see there's a general cascade. The CIO has a maximum opportunity of 200, or we would say a target of 100, and then it cascades from there within the investment groups. And then the next slide just goes into the breakdown by position of how much of it is total fund and quantitative, how much is quantitative and asset class, how much is it is qualitative, and which portion is based on strategic performance. And the goal of this, it looks a little complicated, but it's fairly logical in that we're trying to measure and reward people based on the area they have the most influence on. So people who are focused on investments naturally have a higher weighting on investments. Those who have oversight over the whole portfolio have a bigger emphasis on that. Those who are more asset class-focused are based on that. And everybody has a, you know, call it a personal performance aspect. So to ensure that sustainability and long-term viability of the organization, very important to have something that's not just numerically based, but also based on behaviors and training and development and growth that are really important for the organization. I have one more slide that we can sort of take questions, but quickly for the board. You know, Susan and I work in this space a lot, but we want to sort of remind you kind of what we're seeing out there. So public pension salary increases are going to be just around 5% this year. They tend to outpace the market. So if you ask us what the typical market pay increases are, we would say 3% to 3.5% right now. Pension funds are higher. They're about 5%. Over the last 20 years, there's been an evolution in pension funds of incentives being the exception to incentives being the norm for large and complex organizations. So all of the peers, both in the U.S. and Canada that you think of that are, you know, even closer comparably sized to you, have incentive plans. Some of the smaller ones don't, but all the big ones do. What we're seeing in the future is something you've already talked about that Crystal mentioned is long-term incentives. You know, that seems to be the next frontier. A couple of them have it. State of Wisconsin has it, CalPERS have it, Canadian pension plans have it. It is something new that we're not seeing as a majority yet, but certainly an emerging trend. And then lastly, I would say what we're seeing in a lot of pension funds is a push to include more roles in the incentive plans. So not just investment jobs, but jobs that are, we call, investment-adjacent. Sometimes accounting, sometimes it's finance or legal or IT, that without those jobs, it's really hard for the investment team to do what they're trying to do. But, you know, come the end of the year, the incentive team gets, or the asset management team gets a reward and the supporting cast does not. And so that creates a bifurcated culture, which is not ideal for organizations. So that's been what we've seen in a lot of pension plans to date. So with that, before I turn it over, any questions that I can answer?
You don't have to go deep down this road, but I'm just sort of curious when the genesis of like incentive comp started in the, sort of in the investment world, since the beginning of time, where investment professionals incentivized? And just because obviously public pension funds are the easiest place to see some of how that disparity sometimes can play out internally. And so could you just give like a one minute, like, when did that start? And then why does it seem like in the investment world incentives play a big part of comp when it doesn't seem to play a part in other parts of financial institutions?
Sure. I think it actually predates my run in this space. I've been doing it for about 24, 25 years. And they existed before that. But I think the reason you see incentive plans in pension plans, sorry, incentive plans in pension funds versus other parts of government is because you can measure performance much easier than you can in other parts of government, right? So you know if the investment team beat their goals or not because you have a benchmark. That's much harder to do with other parts of state government where it's more qualitative. And I think the portability of employees, because typically without an incentive plan, it's very difficult to compete with for-profit entities. And it's still very difficult to compete, but you're just trying to bridge that gap to make people willing to work for less, but work for the mission and other things that come with working in organizations like state pension plans. If the gap is just vast, it's hard to convince employees to work for you. And we're talking a lot of money, right? So the choices that state pension plans have is you can outsource it all to outside managers, which is expensive, right? It's, yes, it's 20 or 30 basis points, but on hundreds of billions of dollars, that's a lot of money. If you can manage it internally and actually is at the same level of quality, it's a lot better for the state of California. So I think the idea is if we can get the right talent, and that's going to cost us, we can actually end up saving a lot of money and keeping the talent in-house. So that's been the genesis, and it's, you know, it doesn't go away, right? I think the states that don't have it are trying to get them because they fight these same battles. And I think that's where the long-term incentive plans are coming in, is we're not really measuring long-term, we're trying to make it more competitive. Because you already have a three-year plan, that's essentially a long-term plan in the grand scheme of things.
In some people's eyes, that's long-term. For CalSTRS, that's like, you know, a day and time. So, no, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Harry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I think you've accomplished the goal, which is really to provide us an overview of our current philosophy and walk us through how we got to where we are today. And I think on a forward-looking basis, as we work with you, through the board and the Investment Committee, and with our HR team and our executives and our consultants, I think it would be helpful for us to hear from you as our consultants on compensation, the trade-offs between if, in fact, when we make some adjustments so that we remain competitive and remain an attractive place to seek talent, that we can look at the trade-offs between enhancing the incentives versus base pay, what those trade-offs are, the complexity versus simplicity. And, yeah, I think that would be really something you've probably thought about already, but I wanted to be explicit about it as we do this work this year.
Duly noted.
So I think my question was similar, if not the same, but do we have any data on how well LTIPs are working for the funds that use them in retaining employees?
The short answer is no. I think they're all pretty new.
That's what I thought, but okay, thank you.
But I mean, I think you can, if you wanted to extrapolate, do long-term incentives work in other types of organizations, and that we certainly have some data on.
I think there's one other variable that's super important. We look at, yesterday we did the cost report. We see the efficiencies of managing funds in-house. I think the team is continuing to look at other ways that they could also reduce costs. So to the extent that that's helpful in any analysis, I think that would be super helpful for us, as well as our funding level as the fund continues to increase its funding level. From this board member, that's super, super important. I'd love to see us be able to continue to maintain a competitive place. People want to work, they're accomplished, they're working towards a mission, they feel valued and appreciated, they want to be here. They may not be the highest-paid people in the financial service industry, but they feel valued. And simultaneously, that funding level continues to increase. So anything you have on that, I think would be super helpful for us to have too.
I don't see any other questions from the board. Steve, would you like to add anything? No, good. Okay. Oh.
Great.
Go ahead. He just popped in.
I'm going to try to connect the board's decisions in terms of implementing an investment strategy with the talent of staff and the ultimate results. I was sharing with Harry, I had just bought a house, and so the only thing I could think of was a house analogy. I'm just going to preempt that excuse by saying that you can imagine the board as the architects and the owners, and staff like myself, you can consider me the general contractor, and maybe the senior teams, the subcontractors. The materials are the staff, our consultants are partners, and of course, the house, the house that we're building is the teachers' fund. So what kind of house did we build? Well, you know, looking at these results, I would say congratulations to the board, credit the board for all the decisions, and credit staff for the implementation over time. We generated 8.1% per year over 10 years, and that has resulted, the excess returns, how much we beat our benchmarks, has increased our funding ratio from 72.5% to 76.7%. That's only the amount we beat our benchmarks by. Again, the amount that we beat our benchmarks by is going to lead to a projected savings of $28.7 billion in state contributions as those fall off in 2027. Now, to look at some tangible numbers, we need to meet or exceed our 7% actuarial rate. We've done that. We've generated $37.1 billion above that over the last 10 years. We hope to exceed our reference benchmark. For us, that's 70% stocks, 30% bonds, and we exceeded that by $21.7 billion over the last 10 years. We also try to exceed our policy benchmark, the strategic asset allocation. And again, over the last 10 years, we exceeded that by $16.3 billion. Now, I want to go back to the analogy of the house because the board can instruct or architect different types of houses, from something that's simple to complex. So if you think about a simple portfolio, a reference portfolio of 70/30, you could have us implement something very simple like that, a public markets one. That's probably not something very interesting in today's world. You could have us implement a diversified portfolio, like our strategic asset allocation, and that's blending public markets and private markets, being geographically diverse and diversified in many different ways. And you can have us implement a direct active investing portfolio that's also diversified, which is where we are today. We're on the far end of the spectrum for complexity. Now, not surprising to CalSTRS history, what you see is that the returns go up as we've been executing a more direct investing strategy, and the risk, as measured by volatility, has gone down, right? So we generated 8.1% returns over a diversified benchmark, our strategic asset allocation, which generated 7.6%, which exceeded the simple reference portfolio, the 70/30 stocks, 7.5%. Of course, that was all above our actuarial rate of return of 7%. Not surprisingly, as you develop a more diversified portfolio, your volatility or risk goes down as well. So let me just flip to the next slide. And so if you think about the lower risk, one of the mandates, I believe, from the architects or the owners, your board, is that you want us to be more consistent in our returns and lower that volatility over time. So we're unique in things that we have, for example, a risk-mitigating strategies division that helps damper returns. What this has tangibly led to is over the last 10 years, our realized volatility is 8.7%. That's about 30% less risk than the reference portfolio. So very, very much a lower risk. On the other end, we mentioned this yesterday in the far end, the cost savings. We have implemented the collaborative model. We've tried to be very cost-conscious, but all to develop, again, the best net returns, right? We're not penny-wise, pound-foolish, and so everything we do is to generate cost savings to increase our returns. And we've done that, and if you compared us to our peers, we're about 31% less costs. We saved roughly $2.6 billion in the collaborative model savings. I've talked about the three other value-add and state contributions, so let me just focus on that center hexagon. You can imagine some of the best investments that you've ever made. What would that be, right? So every dollar you're paying to staff at CalSTRS, all-in, benefits, travel, all the expenses, you've generated $34 in excess returns. Those are just the returns above the benchmark. So you've delivered, you had delivered 34X, right? We look at some of the highest-returning private equity returns, and we're hoping for a 3X over 10 years, maybe a 5X. So this has just been a tremendous return on investments. So credit the Investment Committee and the board for all of the right architecture to go into building the best house for the teachers. And I think we all have a lot to look back and be grateful for. I have been raising the flag on risk, though. The risk is that the cost of the materials has been increasing. In other words, the cost to hire and retain staff has been increasing. And so me, as your general contractor, I'm simply, you know, asking, what materials do you want me to utilize to build what house for the teachers? It's been a phenomenal house to date, but I feel compelled to tell you, you know, and identify that risk. And with that, I'll pass it back to Crystal.
Thank you, Scott. That concludes the presentation. As a reminder, in January, we will be back in front of you, or actually in front of the Compensation Committee with a labor benchmark study. So McLoggan is in the process of gathering the data for us to provide us data on compensation. And then Mercer will begin meeting with each of you to get feedback from you all about the current policy and any changes that you may want to make. I think the plan is to start scheduling with board members after January, and so Mercer is going to start with other staff within CalSTRS, executives, myself. And with that, happy to take any questions. Okay. Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one decision point. Is there a best and worst example to share with us, like who pays the most and who pays the less in terms of pension funds? In terms of pension funds? Yes. It's a request. You don't have to answer it now. I wouldn't mind seeing that, just to, for, to appreciate what's high and low.
I do not see any other questions. Thank you very much. We look forward to January. Are there any public comments on item number nine?
There are no public comments for item nine.
Item number 10 is the adoption of our proposed operating budget. I don't believe there's a presentation for questions.
Just real quick. Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here with Prat Paul Baines. She's our Assistant Director over Financial Planning and Budgetary Reporting. And since the September board meeting, we've made no changes to the budget that was presented to you in September. All the same information that was given to you in September is in the board materials you have today. We also have a summary that we can show you on the screen of what's in the budget. And we're recommending approval and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks.
If no one has any question, I'll refrain from moving the approval of the budget after everyone has a question. It looks like Ms. Prat has a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, just real quick question on the vacancies and the requests within BCPs for additional positions. I know that, I think over the last year, CalSTRS has about 156 vacancies that it has open at the moment with only about 16 currently being recruited. Is there any way of utilizing some of those vacancies to compensate for or to, you know, you could use those to reclassify, to satisfy some of the requests within the BCPs?
That's a great, important point. Thank you. So the positions we're requesting as part of these two proposals, they're separate and apart from the positions that are vacant. So we did, as part of our budget development cycle and going through each of the requests, really understanding what the scope and the demand for each of those positions was. And to the extent that we can redirect a vacancy, we absolutely have those conversations. And that's an ongoing practice that we do have, but for these 60, it's different. It's more tailored to our new strategic plan. And a lot of that scope is new in nature.
I understand that, but if you're going to reclassify a vacancy, you could reclassify it for what you need within those new 60 positions, potentially? Or are you saying that, for some reason, you don't think you're, that that's an option?
Not an option right now. And we did go through that as part of our budget development cycle. We did evaluate the existing vacancies within the organization and whether or not the requests that were coming in, we could, we could utilize an existing vacancy. So that is part of our process. In addition, we do ask all the branches, when they're requesting positions for their divisions, do you have a vacancy available that perhaps you can redirect? So we do go through that evaluation process.
So I guess one last question then, related to the vacancies themselves. If we're not reclassifying them, perhaps for some of these additional expansions, what are the salary, how is the salary savings being recouped for those vacant positions that are open? 140 positions of salary savings? Are they being utilized somewhere else across the, within the departments? Are they being, so there's obviously salaries associated with those positions, correct?
Come on, next. So you're asking what we're doing with the salary savings?
Yeah, what is happening with that salary savings associated with those?
Did you want to take your, yeah, me too? Okay. So a couple of things. One, I want to address your first question is, to the extent that we've determined that we can't utilize any vacancy for any new work that we need to have done, there's opportunities if there, we want to, we don't want to use too many because we still have a lot of blanket positions in the Pension Solution Project that at some point, once that is stabilized, we're going to have to come back to you and potentially have a request to have additional funding to support those positions until such time as those positions go to other classifications in the organization. We have a plan that we're working with HR on that, but to the extent that we might need positions, we want to have a little bit of a cushion to give us some options, depending on where those positions need to sit in the organization, because we do have some that will be going back into the business. So we don't want to be so tight in that. So we're waiting to see how that sort of plays out. In addition, she's right. We do an extensive justification process. And we really push back on, okay, your classifications, do you really need these extra positions? And oftentimes, we have, we do such a good job of of developing our internal staff and having them be competitive for that next role. They're getting those next roles, which means it's another vacancy that we have to fill in the organization. So it's just kind of a, you know, we're constantly doing the recruitment because we are hiring so many people internally. So I want to just mention that. For the salary savings, if we don't need it, we don't spend it. So while we might have salary savings from the vacancies, it doesn't necessarily mean that bonanza, we got more money and we want to spend it someplace else. We're very, we try to be very prudent on the money that we spend. And we often try to end the year with a surplus on purpose because if something comes up that's urgent, something we didn't expect, like a COVID, we want to have extra money on the books just in case to support us through that. So we want to have a nice cushion, so we don't necessarily spend it just because we have it.
I just wanted to make a comment on the vacancies as well. We always look at the vacancies to determine whether or not those positions are required for ongoing operational work. So that's where the first evaluation is. Because if we take it somewhere else, we're going to have to come back and ask for the position again because it's going to be, the work is ongoing. So these are, this is new responsibilities. Where we really look is when vacancies are held for a really long time, why are they held? Is it a recruitment issue? Is it some other strategy? So that's where we really delve into, you know, whether or not we could take that position and reallocate it somewhere else. Sometimes it is a recruitment strategy, a difficulty for those positions. But we want, we want to make sure that the business areas have the resources they need to carry on the ongoing work. And when we do have vacancies or turnover that are higher in different areas, sometimes that drives overtime of staff, which we don't want to do because it's a higher cost of staff doing a job that could be done by somebody full, you know, just in a full-time position. So it's a cyclical type of a process, but.
Are there any public comments on item 10?
There are no public comments for item 10.
Okay, Ken has moved the item. Harry seconded.
Yes, would be great. Ms. Pearl?
I pushed it. Oh, there we go. I'm sorry, abstention.
Ms. Caigos?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Henny?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Juarez?
Aye.
Truppers and Bradford, would you like to vote?
Yes, and yes.
Great, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to item 11. And Joyce Lynn, before you begin, I have a request.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I want to say thank you to the work that's gone into these regulations that address the statutes that will be in effect in 2027. Let everyone know, there is an issue, there's an issue regarding factor pay under current law that has come to my attention, which these regulations cannot address. I would like to direct staff to explore the issue and draft clarifying regulations and bring them to the board in January to begin the formal rulemaking process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Noted. Good morning.
We have some issues that are not addressed in the rules that we're most likely going to approve today. Yeah, and so I would like for us to look into that because we found one local, one school district that's having issues. And as we've looked into it further, there are several, and it's something that we should really fix for everyone to make it fair and equitable in how people are getting their retirement salary figured out. Did I do that justice? Okay. Okay.
Yes. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. And that's for current law, not under the regulations that you're considering today. But good morning, good Madam Chair, members of the board. For item 11, I am requesting the board's adoption of the Credible Compensation Simplification Regulations. These regulations have been through two comment periods, and there was a hearing held at your board meeting in September. We received one comment in the first comment period from the Los Angeles Unified School District that was in support of the regulations and asked for a guide to be published on the new guidance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just to make sure, I did misspeak. I said it was on these rules. It's on current and existing law. So I just want to make sure that you got that. Correct, it'll be new in January, another regulation. Okay, are there any public comments on this item?
We do have public comment on this item. We'll start with a three-minute timer, please. I will announce the person that's going to speak and then the person after them. So if we could have our first speaker, who is Nicholas, followed by Mary Kay.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Watson, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association. We wanted to bring a recent legislative change to your attention, which in the absence of a legislative fix will result in an exodus of members from your system. AB 1997, sponsored by CalSTRS, was passed last fall. Its provisions will become operative July 1, 2027. This bill makes several changes to CalSTRS law. The most significant of these changes was a change in what triggers eligibility for CalSTRS membership. Historically, it is the performance of creditable service as defined by Teachers Retirement Law that makes an educator eligible for CalSTRS. After AB 1997 becomes operative, it will no longer be the performance of creditable service that makes one eligible for CalSTRS. Instead, it will be service in a position subject to membership that establishes eligibility. For school districts, county offices of ed, and community colleges, this change really is a mere simplification. But for charter schools, AB 1997 is not a simplification. It is a massive upheaval, although this upheaval is nowhere mentioned in CalSTRS statements sponsoring the bill, the Legislative Council's digest, or the legislative analyses that reviewed the bill. AB 1997 provides that a charter school employee will only serve in a position subject to membership if the position is included in a certified bargaining unit represented by an exclusive representative, or two, if the law requires the position to be credentialed. Unlike a school district or county office of ed, the board of a charter school cannot ensure its employees are CalSTRS eligible by requiring a position to have a credential and then designating the position as a position subject to membership at a public meeting. This is an enormous and enormously inequitable change because most charter school positions are not included in certified bargaining units and because the only charter school positions that the law requires to be credentialed are teacher positions. There are, there are a huge number of non-teacher charter school administrators who presently perform creditable service and are members of CalSTRS, who will no longer be members of CalSTRS despite the fact that the employee will be performing the exact same functions on July 1, 2027, when will be, when they will be CalSTRS ineligible, that they were performing the day before when they were CalSTRS eligible. And despite the fact that the employee will be performing the exact same functions and in the exact same position as their school district counterparts who will remain CalSTRS eligible. And there's nothing the charter school or charter school employee can do about it. Under AB 1997, the employee will suddenly be CalSTRS ineligible on July 1, 2027, even if the charter school requires the administrator to have a credential, and even if the administrator has that credential. There's a very narrow grandfathering provision, which is of little help because it is lost as soon as the employee changes their position or employer after this change takes effect.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mary Kay, followed by Jennifer.
Good morning. My name is Mary Kay Scheid, and I am the Chair of CTA's Retirement Committee. I wanted to take a moment to publicly thank the CalSTRS staff and you, the members of this board. A number of years ago, we brought forward several concerns related to the way that CalSTRS laws and regulations were negatively impacting members in their retirement. Instead of being defensive, CalSTRS became an important ally in addressing these concerns. The broad coalition that worked on AB 1667 and later AB 1997 have improved the system in critically significant ways. The beneficiaries of the CalSTRS pension will likely never understand the importance of these laws and regulations because they are no longer vulnerable to the old laws and regulations that could have reduced their benefit. But the truth is that our collective efforts will benefit CalSTRS members for years to come. As this board considers these regulations, I want to openly acknowledge everyone who made this moment possible. CTA enthusiastically supports these regulations and looks forward to continuing our partnership as we work on implementation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our last speaker will be Jennifer.
Good morning. Jennifer Baker with the California Retired Teachers Association. I'd like to take a moment to go into the Wayback Machine and just note that we've been working organizationally as CalSTRS members and CalSTRS itself has been working on the issue of credible compensation for over 20 years. This is not a new discussion that has taken place. We've had a number of complexities, which this gentleman right here has been part of over that time. And what's important to note is that these have not been easy conversations. They've been very difficult for CalSTRS and for stakeholders. We had a very transparent and thorough process working on what ultimately became the bill. And AB 1997 and other bills that were passed around that time were extremely transparent throughout the legislative process. We have never had stakeholder participation at levels that we did previously. These bills were absolutely historic moving forward. So I do want to thank you for the transparency. I want to thank you for the opportunity to collaborate with all stakeholders that chose to participate in this process. And we thank you for the continued transparency moving forward and look forward to the adoption of these regulations.
Thank you for your comment. That is the conclusion of public comment for item 11.
Okay, thank you very much. Joyce Lynn, I have one further question that the comments have sparked, if I may ask it. How is position to, subject to membership addressed in this rulemaking package on item 11?
To clarify that term, and the definition is not addressed in this rulemaking package. So the term as described was defined in the law under AB 1997. So any issues that have been raised would also have to be addressed legislatively in the law.
Legislatively, not in the rulemaking.
Correct.
Are there any further questions? I believe it's been moved and seconded, so we'll need to take a roll call.
Ms. Pearl?
Aye.
Ms. Caigos?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Gunning?
Aye.
Mr. Henny?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Juarez?
Aye.
Truppers and Bradford, would you care to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, that was item 11. Item 12?
Great, thank you. For item 12, this is the adoption of updates to the Administrative Remedy Regulations. So I'm asking for that adoption today. This set of regulations had one comment period, and the public hearing at the September board meeting, we received one comment addressing two issues that are outlined in your board item. And so staff reviewed both of those issues and determined that no changes were necessary to the language of the regulations. So what you've been reviewing all along is what's before you today for consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Give everyone a minute to refresh their memory.
It's been moved by Ms. Yamamoto and seconded by Mr. Gunning. Oh. Are there any public comments on item number 12?
There are no public comments for item 12.
Okay. Please, roll call vote. Ms. Pearl?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks? Mr. Hennig?
Yes.
Mr. Hennig?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders? Mr. Flores?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes. Item number 13, Adoption of Updates to Board Election Regulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm here before you today to ask for the adoption of Updates to the Board Election Regulations. These go through a different process. So they were presented for a first reading in September. We received no public comments at that board meeting, and we haven't received any written comments either. And so, again, the request is for adoption, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, Mr. Keely?
Joyce, I have a question around the electronic signatures. Is that a decision we're making today that that would be permissible? Or is that a decision that we made prior to the packets being sent down?
The language of the regulations does not specify how the signatures are supposed to be gathered. So it directs that signatures are necessary and that the identities of members who do sign on to petitions be validated by the elections coordinator. But there's no specific guidance in the regulations. So it does allow for it, but it does not require or specify.
It allows for it?
It doesn't specify one way or the other, how the signatures are gathered.
So let me be explicit. I have reservations around electronic signatures being used to qualify. It increases the risk of misrepresentation.
Cassandra?
I believe, and Joyce, correct me if I'm not correct, that when the board sets the parameters of the election, you will make that decision at that point. And I think that was a question.
Thanks. Okay. That's what I wasn't sure. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Joyce. And thanks, Cassandra.
Are there any public comments on item 13?
There are no public comments for item 13.
It's been moved by Ken and seconded. I heard somebody. Okay. Thank you. Could we take a vote, please? Ms. Pearl?
Aye.
Ms. Gallegos?
Aye.
Mr. Keely?
Aye.
Mr. Tang?
Aye.
Ms. Yamamoto?
Aye.
Ms. Hendricks? Mr. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Hennig?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Flores?
Aye.
Chairperson Bradford, would you care to vote?
Yes and yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Madam CEO, we have about 15 minutes. Can we fit in item 14?
I think we can.
Okay. Let's do it. As you're walking up, Vishali, I just want to say thank you so much for covering for me when I had the family emergency. I really appreciate you doing that. And everyone commented on what a wonderful job you did. So thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, or good morning, I should say, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here today with Vishali Dwarka, the Director of Enterprise Strategy Management, to provide you all with an update on our innovation program. So I'll go over the program progress since the last time we met, and then I'll hand it over to Vishali to speak to the work that we've been doing to build a culture of innovation here at CalSTRS. And then I'll close out to discuss the next steps. So to refresh your memory, innovation was a board priority in the strategic plan for fiscal year 2022 through 2025. During this period, we partnered with Accenture to assess and build our capabilities in the area of innovation. The first step was to assess our readiness through a culture DNA survey, focus groups, and workshops to understand our opportunities and potential barriers to success. A playbook was developed to outline the process for ideation, developing prototypes, and scaling ideas if they're a good fit for the organization. And you can see where we are. We've gone through the assessment phase, the design phase, and now we're in the implementation phase. So fast forward to our newest strategic plan. Our objective in this plan for innovation is to expand and extend our capabilities and culture to support a strategic and innovative mindset with a number of initiatives planned. The first key activity is to establish staff and structure. And I'm happy to report that we have hired two new staff team members to the group, and we are evaluating the best governance structure within the organization to actually support the program. The second activity is to develop an intake portal for these ideas, and this activity has actually been completed. Cassandra and I both have had a demo of this portal, and it's an excellent tool that we're going to be able to use to roll out to our organization for this intake of new ideas. And lastly, we're continuing to run sprints, utilizing the playbook to increase efficiency and the service to our members. And Mr. Flores asked me yesterday, Lisa, what is a sprint? It's kind of an innovative term. And a sprint is a time-boxed intensive process used to rapidly solve a problem or test new ideas, opposite of a marathon. Currently, we're assessing our ability to conduct planning sessions in the organization for our members in a more flexible, tailored way to a member's situation. So that's a pilot we have going on right now to find out whether or not there's a possibility that these planning sessions might be shortened based on the individual requirements or needs of the members that are asking for those sessions. And we have completed another that streamlined our technology governance and approvals process for more rapid experimentation. So even though we have new members that haven't been here that long in the organization, they are actively working on sprints for this program. So I'll turn it over to Vishali now to discuss the other initiative that develops the culture of innovation, which is such an important component of our success in this area. You can build it. You can ask for it. But if you don't train people to have that mindset, those ideas aren't going to come flowing through the organization like we want them to. So I'll turn it over to you, Vishali.
Good morning, members of the board. Let's see. Here we go. Driving innovation requires the right structures, which include tools, technology, and processes, and the culture, which includes mindsets, behaviors, and ways of working. And that's what Lisa has been talking about. To be successful, you need both the structure and the culture working together. We've made a lot of progress on the structure, like Lisa has mentioned, in the last two years. And therefore, today, I'm focusing on the cultural aspect. Our staff surveys show that over 90% of our staff know how their job contributes to the mission. Staff deeply care about our members and want to make sure that they do right by our members all the time. This highlights our culture of excellence, which we pride ourselves in. However, when you're striving for excellence, that can be a barrier when it comes to innovation and while exploring new ideas that involve ambiguity and taking risks. While we understand and we know that we must be good stewards, an innovative mindset requires us to be comfortable taking calculated risks and failing effectively. And this is where culture plays a big role. So to accelerate this culture, in June, we launched Sparking Innovation. It's a training and development program designed to energize and build excitement around ideas and the concept of experimentation, which includes sprints as well. Training was customized for staff at all levels, allowing them to explore how making small changes in their daily work creates bandwidth, helps them work more effectively, and generate momentum around new ideas. We had four objectives with this training program. We wanted to achieve our strategic plan goal of addressing the educational and cultural components around innovation. We wanted staff to feel empowered to practice behaviors that help them ideate, share, and activate ideas. We wanted to deploy a learning experience where everybody felt safe, comfortable, and energized to participate. And we wanted to give leaders tools and to let those learnings flow down to staff at all levels. So we held 12 workshops between June and August where participants learned how to use behavioral experimentation with three categories of experiments to choose from. So there were experiments to create space, move as one, and take action. There were a total of 36 custom experiments, and each participant ran an experiment of their choice appropriate for their role. And it was for about four to six weeks. And since leaders have the biggest impact on an organization's culture, we asked them to share their reflections with us. Overall, the participants felt that the workshops gave them tools to help them with their work. Directors and managers felt energized when given the space to experiment and contribute to ideas. Almost 60% of leaders chose to create space experiments. However, we also found that leaders did struggle to protect planning time. And they felt that if they missed meetings, attending meetings, it would also mean that they would lose their influence, which is very important for them. Therefore, they wanted to find ways to be able to reflect and experiment during their meeting-heavy days. So you may be wondering what those experiments look like. So we have three on the screen, which are three sample experiments from the 36 that staff got to choose from. To wrap up the training, we hosted a virtual sparking innovation tournament where we asked all staff to vote for one experiment that would have the most impact here at CalSTRS. And the decision agenda, which is displayed on the screen, was what was the tournament winner and became a new way of working for all staff here at CalSTRS. What the decision agenda does is it encourages meeting organizers to include an agenda in their meeting invites where there are any decisions that need to be made. It helps participants to better prepare, ensure discussions are focused, and have more effective meetings. Now, the decision agenda may not feel as exciting or as splashy as bringing a new product to market. However, the scaling this experiment shows that there's leadership support for staff's ideas because ideas can come from anywhere. And we all have to work together to be successful. So that was the learning here. It also signals that even small changes can make a big difference. And this was a great way of starting to practice our mindset shift in a safe way to get everybody comfortable in trying something new. So in terms of outcomes, we had over 600 staff attend an optional training during a very busy time right before the launch of Benefit Connect. This highlighted staff's interest in innovation and contributing to ideas. We now have an established common language around innovation. Sparking innovation demonstrated that there's value in trying something new. We also now have a cohort of innovation-ready leaders to continue our innovation culture here at CalSTRS. These mindsets are essential to drive new ideas and make future innovation efforts more efficient since we now have a common understanding. And since culture does take time to develop, by investing this time upfront, we've not only accelerated that mindset, mindset shift, but we've also now built that foundation, which will continue our momentum to practice at a larger scale. And with that, I'll pass it back to Lisa, who can wrap us up.
You going to do that for me? I'll do it for you. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So we expect to have the formal governance process developed and implemented by the end of the calendar year. And the internal-facing idea portal will be formally launched within the organization, complete with a communication plan by mid-January of 2026. And what I wanted to share with you is these ideas that are going to be coming through this portal, they're either new ideas or a problem to solve. So when we're thinking about people in the organization submitting these ideas, that's what we want them to be thinking as they're putting things through the process. We have a process right now currently for technology requests and other things. So this is not going to be a portal for someone to say, I need another Microsoft license or I need to enhance a system I already have. It really truly is for new business or problem solving. So we're really excited about it. One of the things that I think is really exciting for our staff is there's no lack of good ideas within the organization. I think there's just people in their business area that are so busy getting their work done on a daily basis. And they have an idea, but they think to themselves, I don't have the time or the energy to maybe tell somebody about this or do the research on my own. What this innovation program is truly going to be is with dedicated staff within the organization. So when people spark those creative ideas within their daily work, they can actually submit a request that requires very little information to this team to do the legwork for them. So it's not that there's not going to be back and forth with needing to go back to the business to make sure they got the problem right. And there is going to be some collaboration. But they have another group of people that can do that work for them. And I think that's what makes this so special and the ability to really maybe spark some really great new ideas for the organization that will impact our members and each other in a very positive manner. So with that, we're welcome to take your questions.
I have a question. Is this enterprise-wide? Is investments participating as well? Yes. Thank you. Mr. Gunning?
Just a comment on the sample experiment impacts. I really like that. I think it's innovative thinking. I think it sparks discussion. And the level of participation from employees and managers, it just feels good. Vibe check. I like that.
Yes, definitely. We wanted to make sure that it was something practical that they could do easy without investing a lot of time while still doing it part of their day.
Simple innovation.
Erin?
Hi, thank you. That was very interesting and very, very, I guess, concise. One of the things I was wondering is, is there a protocol for any staff with new ideas and how that's going to work in the chain? Or, oh, I have an idea. I'm going to go to whatever. And then everybody knows how to do that whatever? And then it'll go from there?
Yeah, exactly. So there's going to be a communication plan that's going to go out, too. And the reason why we want this portal to go to launch in early January is we want to actually leverage the momentum of all of this training that Vishali just talked to because it's really in everybody's minds right now, as well as our leadership in the organization. And so they'll have complete instructions on what they need to do. And so, and the beauty of this tool that Cassandra, this lady right here, Cassandra and I have seen, it's really an interactive tool where if you submit a number of ideas, you have the ability to go in and look at your portfolio of ideas and where those ideas are in the process. Okay. So it's wonderful. So you don't have to wonder where your idea is and whether anybody's looked at it or what have you. And then we're developing a governance looked at it or what have you. And then we're developing a governance with probably a council that consists of the executives, where we're going to be looking at those on a weekly basis to see what kind of ideas are coming in. And then we have to prioritize those ideas with some of the things that we have to do to keep the lights on. So thinking about budget and resources and the importance of that as we kind of merge this new way of doing business and thinking in the organization.
And that is within our strategic plan and?
Correct. Exactly.
Thank you. Sounds exciting.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on item 15?
There are no public comments for item 15.
Okay. Thank you very much for your... Oh, sorry, 14. Sorry. 14. Thank you very much. If it's okay with the board, I am going to do item 15. Then we'll take a 45-minute... Well, then we'll have the CalRTA presentation. Then we'll take a 45-minute lunch. I'm mindful of the weather and some people having to drive some distances. So let's keep rolling. Item 15, review of CalSTRS' basic financial statements.
Chair Bradford, members of the board, I'm Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here with Banky Fatunla. He is our Assistant Director over Financial Reporting and Investment Accounting, and we're presenting the fiscal year 2425 audited basic financial statements. Now, as you may have heard during the Armed Committee meeting yesterday afternoon, our independent auditor Crow issued an unmodified opinion on our financial statements. And that means our financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with accounting and financial reporting standards. In addition, they did not identify any internal control deficiencies. So we did not receive a management letter, and that is for three years in a row now that we did not receive a management letter. So we're super excited about that. Thank you. That just doesn't happen without the hard work and dedication of our staff. There's a lot of people that help us prepare the financial statements. I want to call out Art Martinez, Banky, his teams, the contributions team, the investment team. There's a lot of teams that work together on this. So I want to congratulate them myself on such an outstanding achievement. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Banky to provide you with a quick summary of what's in our financial statements.
It's a good idea that we're talking about accounting before lunch because it's probably hard to handle after. But I'll start with providing a very brief overview of the financial reporting process, which it's a year-round process and it's an organization-wide effort. As an organization, we have various controls that span the organization. We have various policies, procedures, and we perform reconciliations and analyses. We perform to ensure that the information that's generated from all the activity in the system is captured in a complete and accurate manner within the financial statements. And throughout the year, we evaluate our various accounting standards, the new accounting standards that are issued, and new transactions, whether they're investment transactions or new investment types or new legislation, to make sure that any of those changes and their impacts are properly captured within the financial statements. And that culmination of that effort is what results in the basic financial statements that are presented to you today. In addition to this report, we also prepare various financial reports, like the annual comprehensive financial report, which incorporates these basic financial statements, and various other statutorily required reports, various internal reports, and the same financial information is included within our actual evaluation as well. So it's a very critical process. And so, as I noted, we do review various accounting standards through the year. And the two standards that were implemented in the current fiscal year, or rather, in the 2425 fiscal year, were GASB statements number 101 and GASB statement number 102. And I'll just briefly go over them. I'll start by saying that neither of these had a significant impact, but they did change some of the things that we do. The first, GASB 101, relates or handles with or addresses the accounting and financial reporting for compensated absences like vacations and things like that. And it changed the way we did the accounting for sick leave. It wasn't a significant impact, but it did result in some changes. And GASB 102 is a standard that deals with disclosures for certain concentration and constraints that might impact the government's financial stability. And it deals with when we would need to make certain disclosures if an event occurs that would result in that, those risks materializing. And so neither of these, there weren't any events that occurred that would require us to make a disclosure. So there were no disclosures as a result of implementing GASB 102. And with that, I'll just want to highlight a few significant figures and changes within the financial statements. The discussion here relates to the state teachers' retirement plan. This is the most significant plan in CalSTRS. It's about 99% of the net position of CalSTRS. But the board item includes information for CalSTRS as a whole. And the board item also includes some other pertinent information, like member counts that you could refer to as well. So for the year, net position increased to $373.2 billion. And that was a $29.6 billion increase from the prior year. The graphic that you see here does a comparison between net investment income and the change in fiduciary net position. As you can see over the last three years and even going back further, the change in net position is really driven by our investment performance or by the changes in investment income. And so it wasn't different this year. That was the big driver of the change in net position. And that's evidenced by our money-weighted return for the strip, which was 9.3%. I'll just briefly note that this measure of the money-weighted investment return is a GASB measure, and it's different from what's reported by the investment branch, which was 8.4% for the year. And this is more of an accounting measure that's required by the GASB. So the methodology of calculating it is different. Moving on, there are some other changes that I would like to highlight. As I noted, the changes in net investment assets and net investment income are due to the positive returns we had during the year. But we also had increases in member, employer, and state contributions, which went up by 0.6 billion. And that change was driven by increases in our active member population, as well as increase in credible compensation. And we had an increase in our benefit payments and refunds, which is attributable to our increases in the number of beneficiaries and retirees, as well as the annual 2% benefit allowance increase. Lastly, I would mention the net pension liability, which is another critical figure. We don't publish this on our financial statements. We disclose this number within our note disclosures. And there was a decrease, rather, in the net pension liability of $3.4 billion, and that was due to the increase in net position. We'll note that although we don't record that liability, this liability is recorded by our employers and the state of California. So looking forward as we go towards 2025, the current fiscal year we're in, we will continue to evaluate new accounting standards and making sure that we incorporate these within our financials accurately. There are two specific ones that are issued by the GASB. One of them is GASB 103, which changes key components of the financial reporting model for state and local governments, as well as GASB 104, which enhances disclosures of certain capital assets. And we don't expect these to have a significant impact on us. And we'll continue to evaluate new investment types and other transactions as they occur and ensure that those are accurately captured in our financial statements. And with that, I'll turn it over to Julie to address some of the considerations as we transition to Benefit Connect and how that impacts our financial reporting and audit cycle.
Thank you, Banky. So although we're thrilled that we received no management letter for three years in a row, of course, next year, we will be including the transition to the Benefit Connect system in that audit. And implementing a new large-scale system, of course, brings with it significant challenges and risks related to financial reporting. And so we've been working and will continue to work on this to ensure that we are mitigating the challenges and risks that we come up with during this first year of implementation. But no matter how hard we work to document and reconcile the transition, the new controls, the new information that's coming out of the new system, sometimes you just don't know what you don't know. And so we have, as an additional mitigation, we're working with a third-party consultant. They're going to come in and look over our shoulders to see, can they identify anything in our business or technology controls that we haven't identified so that we can know, we can just have that additional set of eyes before next year's audit. And so that work has started. We're hoping that work will be finished by the end of this year. Now, of course, that doesn't give us complete assurance that we won't have any deficiencies in next year's audit, but it sure gives us a leg up, and it also provides us with an opportunity to self-correct sooner before we get to that audit next year. So just wanted to inform you of that additional mitigation that we're doing for the new system. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Henning.
I have a quick question. I mean, I noticed a couple of things that are looking to bring us out of the yellow zone, I guess, as they use as our standard pension zone. I think it goes up to about 80%, and then we go into the green zone, so far as the federal regulations look. And I think that we're at about 77%, looking for some heads of funded for pension liability.
76.7.
76.7. Excuse me. I'm optimistic.
I was rounding a little bit. The Department of Finance hates it when I do that. And then
I just noticed that we are less of a liability of 5%, plus these amazing returns that we received this year. What are we projecting as our percentage of funded? Because we're up at that place where we're almost into that green zone.
The funding is projected to be full-funded by 2046. Actually, five years early, right?
I was going to say, stay tuned for this afternoon.
Forty-six.
You are going to have an item coming up that you're going to get that question answered by our actuaries. They're going to talk about the risks of meeting full funding. Last I checked, we were about, what, three years ahead of schedule in reaching full funding right now.
So 43.
So you're going to get much more information in another item right after lunch.
It'll go up to 3% despite the 5% less liability that we had this past year and an increase of 10%. All right.
And then some.
Oh, I can't wait. I'm so excited.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. I skipped public comments. So are there any public comments on item 15?
No public comments for item 15.
For my next act. Good afternoon, good morning. We're in the crosshairs here. My name is Mark Allen, and I am the lucky person to be the president of CalRTA for the next year and a half. And so I'm here with the honor of presenting a check. Many of you know that last week was the Retired Teachers Week, at a time when we proudly celebrate each year to recognize the invaluable contributions that retirees continue to make out throughout California. This year's celebration was especially meaningful, given the critical role that CalRTA and our grassroots advocates played in repealing the windfall elimination provision and the government pension offset. We again thank Susie Dixon, our President Emeritra, for her leadership and dedication, working directly with the bill authors and representing California educators during her numerous trips and press conferences in DC. It is estimated that California retirees have received as much as $1.8 billion in retroactive Social Security benefits payments since the Social Security Fairness Act was signed in January. In addition to the monetary benefits, today, we also like to highlight the value of the time retirees spend as volunteers in their local communities. Our early leaders set the example of dedication and compassion. In fact, early leaders went on to form other retiree organizations, such as Ethel Percy Ardriss, who formed AARP. Today, we are proud to continue that legacy and thoughtful leadership and advocacy. Finally, it's my pleasure to present to you a representative check symbolizing the dollar amount of volunteer hours contributed by CalRTA members last year at $42,443,233. Thank you, STRS Board, for your continued support and dedication towards California retired teachers.
for all that you do. With that, we will adjourn to lunch and be back at 12:45. Welcome back to the CalSTRS Board Meeting, regular meeting. We are on item 16, the Review of CalSTRS Funding Levels and Risks Report with David and Rick.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. So this is the 10th Annual Funding and Risk Report. And I just want to take the time to really thank David, because when he came over, that's what he started to work on immediately. So it's a huge, lot amount of work to do this report. And he's done an excellent job. And then I want to shout out Jordan, who is his main assistant and does a lot of the work on it. So to the extent that it's good, you can really thank David and Jordan for it. And so hopefully, this report, the summary of it, does give you an idea of whatever numbers we give you, it kind of puts it into context and shows really the risk that what we say doesn't happen. Because it's not going to be exactly as we lay it out, and this kind of gives you an idea about how far away we are from that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to David.
Thank you, Rick. And before I start, I promised Rick I would not let him have his Tim Duncan moment of just sending an email on Friday night telling us he's retiring on Monday. So I have to say something. So I was just going to spend a few minutes just to... So I first met Rick in June of 1999, when I was hired across the river at a different state employer. And when I arrived, to my left was Mr. Rick Reed, and to my right was Anthony Sweeney. And I had the privilege of working for about 10 months with Rick, because in May of 2000, he was the first ever system actuary for CalSTRS. That was the first time CalSTRS hired a staff actuary. And Rick Reed was the person they hired after a competitive selection process. But little did I know that 15 years later, I would end up right beside him again. And it's been a privilege for me to work with him the last 10 years. So what I wanted to just, as an actuary, I just wanted to throw a couple of fun facts of what we've seen for the last 25 years while Rick has worked at CalSTRS. While our liabilities have gone up from $86 billion to $381 billion, that's a constant 6% growth per year. No fluctuations there. It's always consistently increasing. Life expectancy, since Rick has been hired, our teachers live three years longer than they did when they were first hired. Yes. Yes. When he was first hired, we paid $4 billion in benefit in 2000. When he was first hired, we paid $4 billion in benefit in 2000. We're about to pay $20 billion this year. And by the time he retires, which I believe is January 20th, he would have worked 25.722 years, or that's also 9,395 days dedicated to making sure we fulfill our mission at CalSTRS. But most importantly, Rick was here when we had no funding in place. And I know he was a key part of all the work that was done that led to our funding plan, and which is what we're here to talk about today. So. With this, we can move on. So as Rick mentioned, whoops, there we go. So when we first did that report 10 years ago, if you remember, we've been tracking these same risks for the last three years, kind of the, here are the things that could really impact our funding. Longevity risk, our teachers live a long time, but we've built that into the funding of the system. So it's something we keep track of, but not something we're really too much about. But these are our two risks. The membership and payroll growth risk, how many active teachers do we have in the system on which we collect money? And investment risk, also our return, our 7% goal, are we meeting it? So we wanted to show you how did we do since we first published that report. There we go. Let's talk about membership growth risk. So we look a lot at the total payroll and how many active members we have in the system. So what you see here is for the last 10 years, how many active teachers we've had. And in red to the right is the most recent number we have as of 2025. We now have the most teacher we've ever had actively members of the defined benefit program, 471,000 active teachers. It was just above 425 back 10 years ago. Again, that has been one of the reason why we are where we are funding wise, and I'll show you a picture in two slides. Investment return wise, Scott mentioned it earlier this morning, our return for the last 10 years, 8.1%, more than 1% above our assumed seven. But you know it comes with volatility. And this is a good picture, because we've put in red for you the years in which we did not meet seven, and in blue when we did. Now, if you count the reds, it's five. Count the blue, it's five. So it's, it always comes our way this way. But you can see how we greatly benefit from 2021, when we earned 27%. So on average, the last 10 years, 8.1%. So we've exceeded our target. So not surprisingly, and you've seen this picture, it's been similar for the last few years. The red dash line you see is when our funding plan was passed in 2014, what did we expect? And the blue is where we are. So not surprisingly, we've earned more than 7%. We have now more teachers than we did before, payroll increased much faster than expected. We are ahead of schedule. And as per your question this, this morning, Mr. Henning, we are now scheduled to hit full funding in 2043 instead of 46. But again, it assumes we earn our 7% long term. Now, we're ahead of schedule, why? Because we earned 8% the last 10 years. Now, we want the next 10 years to also be above 7%. So what could bring us closer back to that red line would be if we start earning less than seven, for example. So but that's the main reason why we are ahead of schedule. And when you break down, if you remember, our unfunded actuarial obligation, our unfunded liability, which is about 88 billion right now, we have, there are rules in the funding plan that breaks it down between portion for the state, a portion for the employer. And right now, we're ahead of schedule, but the state is extremely ahead of schedule. Their share is scheduled to be paid off in 2027. And for the employers, 2043, which is why we'll reach full funding in 2043. So in May, when we come back to you with the valuation, when you decide on what to do with the contribution rates, there will be again, no need to increase those rates for '26, '27. So we're still in a, in a good place.
Can we interrupt for a question?
Of course.
Mr. Henning?
Mr. Limerow, you talked about 100% funding. I don't think that there's an expectation that every teacher is going to retire on day one, or tomorrow, or 2043. What do you guys, number one, consider as fully funded? That if there, even if there was a catastrophe or a calamity that costs people to retire, what percentage do you think would be the drawdown? And then secondly, you know, again, appreciate that you're focused on that 100% funded number. What is an 80%? How close are we to 80%?
So right now, we're at, so just to answer the last part of your question, the 80%, we're at 77% right now. And if you see on that chart there, the, we, right now, we're on track to pass 80% in about a year or two. Okay, so we are almost there. For us, we, we did a session with the board years ago. I think just a few of the board members were there. We, I prefer not to look at where we are right now, more what's the trajectory. So right now, we're on a, going upward trajectory, which is what you want to see. You want to make sure you've got a mechanism in place to make sure that you can reach that 100% target. And regarding your other questions with retirements, right now, the way our contributions are set up, technically, when we hire someone, we're asking employers to put money aside so that when retirement comes, it's already fully funded. So generally, retirements will not be a cause for us to see a larger unfunded liability, because by the time they retire, all the money's been saved. Now, what we worry about on our side, and I'll show you a slide about retirement, is we worry a lot also about the contributions we collect. So if we start to see a lot of retirement, and because of budget reasons, or less students in the population, school districts start cutting number of teachers, that could impact the money that comes in to eliminate our unfunded liability. But it's a good question, and I'll show you, we have two slides regarding this coming up. Talking about K through 12, so we've shown you this. This is the November, so this is information that is produced each year by Department of Finance. Since we published the report and the slides were prepared, they actually released their November 25 projections, which we looked at, and they're very similar to this. But the main thing we want to highlight here, we've sung this before, this is something that we are monitoring, because the K through 12 enrollments in California, which have gone down already for the last few years, you can see that with the red bars on this chart, it's now projected to go down by another 16% over the next 20 years. And again, we're keeping an eye on this, because we don't know what it means to the, to the teacher population. But one would think that if you have less students, at some point, there might be a need for less teachers. Again, it's not certain, because there could always be a decision to lower class sizes and so forth, but it's something that we're monitoring. What we wanted to show you this year, although it doesn't really impact our funding, we feel it's useful information, is if you look at the, what we did is we took the information, again, prepared by Department of Finance, and Jordan on our team created this wonderful map of California, just so that we wanted you to see. If you talk about, even though we're projecting a decline, there's a projected decline in K to 12 enrollment in California, what you can see on this map, when it's blue, that's an increase. When it's an orange, brown, yellow, that's a decrease. And if you live in the Sacramento area like we do, and you drive east toward Tahoe, all you're going to see over there are new houses after new houses after new houses. So not surprisingly, you go east of here, all of those counties are projected to see increases in their enrollment. But then you go to larger urban areas like San Francisco, the Bay Area, San Diego, Los Angeles, Orange County, they're all projected to have declines. But overall, in California, there's a projected decline of about 16%. So, so we just felt that this would be interesting to you, and we have this chart also in our report. The other thing we wanted to mention, because that's another thing we keep there, was this mention of retirement. So about three years ago, we did, we presented information at the Benefit and Services Committee on the aging of our membership. So we are about to enter a period of time where CalSTRS, if you look at the active membership of CalSTRS, we will have the highest number of members ever working who are also eligible to retire. So having more people eligible to retire, we are now projecting to see much higher levels of retirement over the next five years. If you look at this chart, the blue bars are our historical retirements from active membership. And if you see only once in our history, we had more than 14,000 retirements. It was in 2010, 910. And if you look at the red bars, which are our projections, we're about to enter a time period where for about a decade, we expect to see more than 14,000 retirements a year. So now we're seeing a large number of retirements coming our way and a declining student population. So we don't know what will happen, but one potential would be for school district to potentially maybe not replace some of these positions as, if they have less students. So we're going to be monitoring this, because again, if we start to see less active teachers, then that would mean less, a smaller payroll, and potentially lower, less contributions coming our way. So that's something we're monitoring. Again, everything, there's nothing to be alarmed, it's just something that we're monitoring. But again, the biggest risk of all, and that will always be our biggest risk, is investment risk. And what we're really keeping an eye on, if you remember a few slides ago, I mentioned that the state is expected to be done paying their share of the unfunded liability by 2027. So we have a, there's, in the funding plan, it's in statute, there's a clause that says that one, once the state is done paying their share, the state supplemental rate, so that's the rate that you're, that you set, that you have the authority to set. So we, you just said it at 6.3% last May. There's a base rate of 2%. So we're collecting 8.3% for the defined benefit program right now. And there's a clause in statute that says, once the state is done paying their share, that supplemental rate is going straight to zero. So right now, it's scheduled to occur in '28, '29. And the reason we're keeping an eye on this is if after that time, we have a, a year in which, let's say, our investment return is negative, it will be much harder to recover from this event compared to if it happens, let's say, next year. And what we prepared for you, just for you to see, was, let's say we were to have a negative investment return in fiscal year '26, '27. So not this fiscal year, but the following one. We just wanted to see if we had either a zero, negative five, or negative 10% return. So we're talking about fairly drastic returns. In all three cases, if it happens in '26, '27, we would still be able to reach full funding by 2046. We are ahead of schedule right now, and we have enough rate-setting authority. We would need to raise the state contribution rate, but we would have enough room to be able to reach full funding. So the reason why we're concerned, and we're going to go back to that slide here, so in '28, '29, the state rate, if they are, if the state in fact pays off their share by then, their rate's going straight, that 6.3% will become zero. And right now, if we need to raise their state contribution rate, again, going forward, we can only do so by half a percent per year. So if you think about it right now, that red bar is 6%. It would take us 12 years just to bring it back to today's rate. So that's why we worry about this. So that same chart here, if you, if you look at those same three returns, so now the only difference with this chart that we're showing is, what if we have those same three returns in '30, '31 instead of '26, '27? So you see, if it's in two years, we reach full funding in all three scenarios. If it's in five years, we only reach full funding if it's a 0% return. In the case of a negative five and negative 10, we would not have enough rate-setting authority for the state to be able to reach full funding. So that's why we're keeping an eye on this. And again, it's, and that will be my last slide, it's kind of goes back to what we're watching right now. If you look at our funding plan, it's working great, we're ahead of schedule, we're on track to reach full funding. But there are a few elements of it that, depending on what happens with future investment returns, that could make it more difficult for us to reach full funding. And that one clause that will eliminate, that would make the state supplemental contribution rate go straight to zero once they pay off their share, that's one feature. And then when you combine that with the fact that if we, if it drops to zero and we need to re-increase it, we can only increase it by half a percent a year, that also will make it more difficult. And the other thing we have to worry about, even though it's now, it's only 21 years away, in 2046, the rules of our funding plan, that ability to adjust contribution rates, react to changing conditions, that's going away in 2046. So I know it's 21 years from now, but at some point, especially if we were to have a, let's say we have a negative 5% return in 2042, four years from 2046, we would have no time to react to it. We would need to have an extension of the funding plan. So, and then, so that's kind of what we're keeping an eye on. So that's our job, we're there to keep an eye on things. Right now, main message is we remain ahead of schedule. We are well positioned to handle a recession, to handle a negative return. But we might, our risk and ability to react will be a little, will be more limited once the state supplemental contribution rate goes down to zero. With this, I'm done with my portion.
So I'd like to make a comment. So there, and actuaries talk about this all the time. I was just at a meeting of actuaries, exciting meeting a couple of weeks ago. So there's kind of the 80% funding myth, that 80% is good, and below, that's bad. So I'd rather be 70% with a funding plan to get to 100% than 80% with nothing to get there. 80% is, is, is really just a number like 75, like 85. So you always rather be, you know, higher funded, but you really want to have a plan to get there through everything that goes on in the economy. So we've got 21 years to get there. I can almost guarantee you, there's going to be a recession or two where we don't earn the 7%. And so we need mechanisms to be able to react to that. But 80% is, I don't know how it got to promulgate it, is a good place to be. It's no better than, you know, it's better than 75, not as good as 85. But the key is the, the, the plan you, you have in place to, to, to make sure the, the plan's fully funded, and you're on your way to that. So I just wanted to make that point about where we are right now. We're better, and we're ahead of schedule, but we still need to keep a good plan in place.
And that's it for us. Happy to take any questions.
Questions from the board? Go for it.
Thank you, I might as well ask it. So you, you talk about a mechanism. What do you talk, what does that mean? What does that mean to us? What does that mean to, to CalSTRS? How do we choose the right mechanism if there's like another choice?
So right now, we have a mechanism in place. It's called the Cal, it's our funding plan.
Right.
It's a mechanism we did not have in 2000, like 15 years ago. So it's the ability to react to what we call changing conditions. Oh, we don't meet our 7% now, we need a bit more money in the fund to go, to be back on track. So it's the ability to adjust contribution rates when needed, to stay on track, to see continuing, improving funding levels. So that's, so we have a mechanism in place.
So what happens in 2047?
Right now, we go back to what we were before. So the employers would go back to contribute eight and a quarter with a contribution that, where we cannot ask more from the employer, and the state, same thing, it would go back to what it was before the funding plan. So we did not really have a mechanism in place before the funding plan. We have one right now, it's just scheduled to go away in 2046.
So, so in '47, then we don't have to do anything? It just kind of reverts back without any legislation or any, any other?
Correct. Right now, when you read the statute for our funding plan, it says that it, I forgot the exact word, but it goes away on June 30th, 2046.
It sunsets.
It sunsets, thank you.
So we would have legislation then?
So we would require, so at, at any point, at some point, because right now, the funding plan works, even if all we said, we like the way it works right now, can we just continue as is? It will require legislative action to at a minimum, remove the sunset date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, is there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment for the item.
Okay, then we're going to go to other public comments.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we have, we would like to call on John, and then after John, we will take Dr. Keaton.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm John Anderson, CTA State Council Rep here. So Rick, believe it or not, I do find all the actuarial information you've provided through years very interesting, very important, and especially about our life expectancies, as we've heard, even about those rogues that want to live to be over 100, those hundreds and hundreds of rogues. So you give us a good encouragement on that, I'm sure. David, you have a charge, you know, now. You now have to keep that trend going to increase our life expectancy rates.
We'd like another three years.
Yeah. So prove it, prove it. You can keep it going. I got one question for you, Rick. If you could just nod or yell out, whatever you like, but it's an assumption of probabilities. What is the probability of you retiring sometime in January of 2026? 100%. All right, folks, sorry. I was going to offer him to lower the, you know, probability, but he's, he said it. So it's a done deal. So with that said, Rick, seriously, just wholeheartedly on behalf of CTA, our retirement committees and CTA in general, we wish you, you know, we congratulate, no, I thank you, thank you. Wholeheartedly thank you for your service you've provided, very important service to all of us and through STIRS. And, um, you know, congratulations. Enjoy retirement as, as best you can. Thank you so much.
Next, we'll have Dr. Keaton, followed by Jennifer.
Dr. Sandy Keaton, representing UTIL, United Teachers Los Angeles, retired. Rick, we'd like to thank you for so many years of answering so many of our questions when we came up here. We had lots of them. You always answered them, always available to us, and we just want to wish you a wonderful retirement. Congratulations.
Jennifer Baker, with the California Retired Teachers Association. And this is the first time, I believe, in the over 25 years I've been working on these issues, that I've ever heard Rick mention, anything has 100% probability. And I'm really sad that this is the reason why. He has been a stalwart and he has really helped to lead the fiscal stewardship of the fund for so long, back in the days when you were across the river and we had 100-year-old hot dogs that we would eat. And we were trying to figure out what the shortfall was from the dot com bus. And we thought $20 billion at the time was a lot of money. And then we found out, no, it's not, when you throw in the Great Recession. And Rick was there the whole time and helped CalSTRS and helped stakeholders. I can't tell you the amount of hours and the amount of scenarios that were put together to create what became AB 1469. And the hours that Rick would stay late and would put together scenarios for the legislature and governor's office and Department of Finance and all of the stakeholders and navigating the wonderful, colorful personalities at the time. He just did such a tremendous job and he is going to be missed. David has very big shoes to fill, but you don't have to be a Longhorns fan if you don't feel comfortable doing that. But I just wanted to say thank you. We are all going to miss you so much, my friend, so much.
Dana Dillon, CTA NEA, retired. I got to go last so we could all run for Kleenex or something like that after I get done talking. On behalf of CTA NEA, retired, Rick, we'd like to say congratulations. You have been a stalwart member of all the trials and tribulations we've all gone through, through all the ups and downs, and you, you served us well. I won't repeat everything everybody else said. And then on a personal note, you have always worked with me and answered any questions I had and helped explain what the hell actuarial science really was and, and, and made it entertaining. And so congratulations, and you're going to love being retired.
I'd like to thank them all for, for their kind comments and I wish the board and everyone well. I also wish you full funding.
Thank you, Rick. Of course, congratulations from the board and you will be missed, but I think you're going to love the next chapter. Okay, item 17, Benefit Connect Operations Update. We need music or something.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashish Jain, Chief Technology Officer. Before I hand it over to Anthony for the update, I want to take a moment to reflect on what this milestone means to us. After years of hard work, we went live in September and ran our first payroll, paying out 1.6 billion in benefits without disruption. That says a lot about the teamwork, collaboration, and discipline across CalSTRS. Now that we have transitioned into MNO, Maintenance and Operations, we would not be providing regular update to the full board. Major updates will be shared through the CEO's written report, and we will continue briefing the subcommittee, Denise, on key progress. I want to thank the board for your trust and the executive team for staying aligned over the years. A big shout out to our business, technical, and project teams, and to all our vendor partners for making this possible. Technologies keep evolving every day, but this team has laid a strong foundation for future innovation. I'm very proud of what we achieved together. With that, I will turn it over to Anthony for the share, the key results and the next steps.
Thanks, Ashish. Good afternoon, Chair Bradford, members of the board, Anthony Sweeney, Pension Solution Project Director. It's now been seven weeks since Go Live, not that we're counting. Despite some challenges, we are up and running and conducting our normal business operations. Happy to have Jeff and Chris with me to share their observations today during this presentation as well. So today, I'll just share some of our Go Live experiences and accomplishments, and then Jeff will speak to challenges the business areas have faced and the contact center experience in our first several weeks. And then I'll share what's ahead and I'll look at our current budget. So as Ashish mentioned, we did have a successful launch on September 23rd. Many of us walked anxiously across the business floors, providing our support and listening for any issues, hoping nothing major came up. And we were fortunate that, you know, we were still able to, to perform business that day. We had support teams with project subject matter experts and our Sagetech team on each of the business floors, and that continued for about five weeks post-Go Live. Subsequently, those folks have returned to their normal area and are, are supporting the business teams from there. As issues were triaged, they were documented and planned for resolution. Data fixes and code updates have occurred daily to resolve issues to allow our end users to maintain continuity of business operations. We're running nightly batch jobs, processing them to keep the incoming work moving through the processes. While things haven't been perfect, we have experienced several milestones over these first seven weeks. We have planned releases every two weeks to fix identified code issues, update data, or make minor system improvements. To date, we've completed three small planned releases with thorough development and testing efforts to ensure the quality of the updates. Our weekly rolls are processing lump sum payments such as refunds, death benefits, and retroactive payments. We're now up to seven weekly payrolls and have started to generate twice a week to keep payments even timelier. As Ashish mentioned, we processed our first monthly payroll in October, which generated over 430,000 retirement payments, where we did extensive reconciliation to ensure payments matched previous amounts or any adjustments in the total benefit amounts were justified based on activity that occurred during the month. The teams did amazing job verifying the accuracy of the data and giving us all confidence in payments that were issued on November 1st. To date, we have not heard of any major issues with that first payroll. Our second monthly for November was processed last night with similar scrutiny and validations. In addition, our annual retirement progress reports were placed online and targeted communications are now going out to members to view those reports online. This is just some of the Benefit Connect activity that's taken place. These examples of daily transactions show the system is processing core business transactions. One of our major efforts has been getting our member regis, members registered in the new system, as we have enhanced security and introduced multi-factor authentication. While some members were able to register seamlessly, like Karen, we did find issues with usability and quickly corrected to see improvements. We reached 75,000 at the time we prepared these slides, but are now over 97,000 registrations as of yesterday. So good progress there. We're processing these day-to-day transactions such as address changes, tax withholdings, retirement applications. These numbers are a blend of member self-service activity via MyCalSTRS, internal staff inputting mailed-in forms, and batch jobs that trigger activities such as bank updates that are reflected in the direct deposit numbers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to discuss what else has been experienced by the business areas.
Thank you, Anthony. Good afternoon. Jeff Zimmer, Chief Benefits Officer. Wanted to share a little bit about the business and user impacts from the new system. And it's important to remember that more than 500 of our team members have had, the way they do their jobs, change significantly. They had been experts in our previous system and they've had to learn and are continuing to learn this new system. So it's a significant change for a lot of people, and I don't have time to adequately convey my thanks and admiration for all that they're doing through these challenges and continuing to learn how to use the new system in the face of trying to maintain our standard of excellence. What I'll focus on a little bit is the front of house, which is MyCalSTRS. So that's obviously what most people see and our greatest interaction with the largest number of customers. So we've received positive feedback about the new MyCalSTRS, constructive feedback and feedback. We will continue to improve MyCalSTRS as we have the previous version of MyCalSTRS for the 14-ish years that we had it. So we're obviously listening and finding ways to better increase the user accessibility and navigation around MyCalSTRS. That's something we'll focus on forever. So another thing I wanted to focus on is the contact center impacts. And Anthony, if you give me the next slide, please. So I asked Shani Kaiser-Boz, our Director of Customer Service, to provide numbers about this period last year and the Go Live period. So this is September 23rd, when we went, when we went live, talked over 18th, when they pulled this stats, pulled these stats. So you can see that the number of calls offered, that's been the calls that we actually took in, increased by 45%. What's amazing is the calls answered was nearly identical to the prior year. And you'd, and while the calls took 40% longer, and you'd ask, how could you service the same number of people, the number of inquiries, when they're taking 40% longer in the same amount of time? It is testament to the creativity and resilience of our contact center staff and all the teams that support them. And some of these contacts spill over to our member service centers, they spill over to our Ombuds Office, they spill over to our Office of Legal and Ethical, Legal and Ethic Accountability, and they spill over even to our Pension Two hotline. So there's just a lot going, a lot of people have pitched in to help answer these inquiries. Even the secured messages have gone up by 25%. And we have noticed that this October, now I can talk about October that it's over, was the highest number of calls received since we've been tracking it for 18 years. And I would imagine, I would bet that November will be higher or as high, because as Anthony mentioned, we've done three communication outreaches, email blasts to members, letting them know that retirement progress reports are available on the new MyCalSTRS. That will increase the registrations, that will increase the inquiries, and in the meantime, we're still answering questions about your DBS, about how do I get more information about my service credit? How do I contact my employer? I don't understand this. All the normal business that we're getting is on top of this increased amount of registration calls that take a long time to answer. And we also have a large number of employer inquiries on the new secure employer website. There are more than 1,000 inquiries we need to get to. Our usual inventory is 150. So everyone that is interacting with the system from a public facing perspective, be it our members, beneficiaries, or employers, are asking us more questions, and that is obviously putting demands on staff, and they are doing their best to stay resilient and again, maintain the best level of service possible. So it's been a little bit hard for us, because we expect to answer these calls much faster than we have been, much, much faster than we have been. And so I appreciate the patience of everyone that is giving us a little bit of grace during this time, but we are still committed to the same level of service for our members, customers, employers, and beneficiaries. So the next slide, and thank you for bringing this up earlier in the meeting, Madam Chair. You mentioned the feedback that we're getting. So this is just an example that I wanted to put on record about what we're hearing from our customers. And the summary is, while they may be frustrated with the process and how long it took to get to someone, when they talk to someone, they are very pleased with that interaction. On the previous slide for our last period, the satisfaction with the customer service representative that the customer talked to, 98, 99%, it went down to 98. That's fine. This is really good feedback. When we have that interaction with someone, they are still feeling heard and they are still appreciative of the service that we can provide. So I, again, I acknowledge that it's taken longer to reach someone, but when people do, they're still having the same positive interaction. And like I said before, how the work is done has changed for more than 500 people, but who we are has not changed. And if we can hold on to who we are and the level of service and commitment we have to our members, employers, and beneficiaries, we will make it through these challenges. But it has been challenging and it will continue to be. So again, like we mentioned before, please bear with us as we go through this period, because things are going to take a little bit longer, we're going to find new challenges. But thanks to the support from our project peers, from our vendor, and from all across the business, we're finding ways to solve these challenges and get through to the next day. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. So in the months ahead, we'll be monitoring, monitoring the progress of that November monthly payroll file we ran last night. It'll head over to the State Controller's Office tomorrow, and we'll track feedback as they are issued on December the 1st. We also have our very important 1099 process coming up at the end of the year, and those must be issued in the month of January to all our benefit recipients. So we're already running some trial reports on those and working on issues with our tax team and Financial Services Branch. And we continue to design, develop, and test for upcoming releases. The first one, major release scheduled in December and then two next year, that will deploy key functionality needed after the end of the 25, 26 fiscal year. Lastly, is our budget slide, that is still accounting for expenditures being recorded towards our Go Live budget. All encumbrances have not been accounted for, but once we have, we'll provide you an updated budget forecast. Next week, we'll have our first post-Go Live quarterly meeting with the Department of Finance to share our progress and budget plans. Lastly, before I turn it over to Chris, in Agenda Item 19D, you'll be asked to approve a contract amendment to continue our relationship with our independent validation and verification oversight team, Maximus, who will continue to provide guidance and suggestions to our post-Go Live activities through stabilization. And I want to close by saying, And I want to close by saying, similar to Jeff's sentiments, while we do consider our first several weeks to be a successful launch, there have been challenges, and these have been felt heavily by our end-business users who are triaging issues while also learning a brand-new system and trying to develop the, or trying to deliver the top-notch service that they're used to. And I can't thank them enough for all their hard work. It hasn't been easy, but they've dealt with the adversity and kept a positive attitude throughout. And it's been really great to work through this with them and be in this situation. And thank you for all your support to get us to where we are. And that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it over to Chris.
Chris, before you start, could I just ask Jeff a quick question?
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, do you have any, I don't know, data from other sources as to when the calls might drop back down? Or is it just?
It may be like this for a while because the next big period is 1099 season. So when members receive their 1099Rs, they often call with questions. Every payday is a big day. That day is always a high call volume. So we have, in the prior system, in the old MyCalSters, I think we had upwards of 700,000 registered users. And I've heard Anthony say that maybe 300-something thousand of those were active users, that they were actually, they were using the system frequently. So either you have a range from 300,000 to 700,000 that we need to get it re-registered. So that kind of base foundational layer of calls that we're going to get may persist for a while. And then it's going to spike up and down as we get through RPRs, get through 1099 season, and then whatever's next that may cause a high volume of calls. So that's what we're looking at for a while. So I can't accurately predict when it will go down.
Curious if there was kind of an insight. And then I'm also thinking it's kind of counterintuitive because holidays are coming up, but I think that's when a lot of teachers make their calls versus, because they're off. So that might be another spike. So thank you for all your work and.
Yes. Customer service is very aware.
Jeff, what was, what have the call times gone down to, though? They have decreased to some.
They decreased a little and then have gone back up.
Okay.
So largely because of the RPR announcements, there are more people that are interested in logging on to MyCalSters and will have to register for the first time. So they had gone down somewhat, but as we get more volume, they take longer to handle, and we're still in that average handle time that's increased by almost 50%. So yeah, it goes up and down.
Thank you. I just kind of wanted everyone to hear that because in our own circles, we can tell people, be patient. Maybe now's not the right time to call. If you can wait till January, end-ish, might be a better time.
If someone needs something, please encourage them to call. As we always say, and there's the secured messages that we can get to. There's always a way to reach us, so. Yeah, callback.
Callbacks.
Yeah, we have those as well. So don't hesitate to contact us. Just understand what we're going through, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris. Oh, sorry, Karen, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Along those same lines, then, we know that we've encouraged members to create their own MyCalSters account. Do we have any data on the ones that have not?
Well, I guess.
And they still use their old account?
No.
No, right. Because it won't go anywhere. But do we have any data on people that have not signed up yet?
I would only have to subtract our known users before, which is again, 700,000-ish. And then Anthony, I think, said we're about 100,000. So one in seven, very, at a very high level estimate. One in seven have registered. But not all of those, as I mentioned to Ms. Bradford, not all of them have used this system consistently. So we're really aiming for like 300,000 of the active users. So maybe you're one-third of the way there. I can't tell you for sure.
So we can tell the folks out there that are listening, just to encourage them to sign up for their MyCalSters.com account. And it'll be on its way to more information coming their way.
Indeed. And most people have a seamless, we don't hear about the happy path.
Right.
We hear about those that have problems and need to escalate, and we get back to them. So most of them go through quickly. But those that don't take a long time to research because of the additional security features that we added to the website. So things just take a little bit longer if there is a problem. So we're trying to reduce, and we have reduced, the hurdles. There were many hurdles on day one. There are fewer hurdles now. So we continue to make it easier to make that really easy path more frequent. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
Of course.
Appreciate all the work.
Chris.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Chris Kabody with Guide House in our independent oversight update. Jumping into the conversation we're having right now, given our objective voice in the room here and our experience in this area, I would say everything that you're hearing and what you're experiencing is normal. Within two months of Go Live of this magnitude that can potentially impact this many internal and external users, there's nothing here that would cause alarm that says we're out of bounds and we need to really take extensive mitigating actions. But it is something you have to deal with, and it's a challenge. And I think being transparent about the fact that call volumes are high and it's taking longer, I think that's important. But it is important to understand that this was a major implementation, and there's a lot of work to do there. And it speaks to the teams that got through this, the vendors, the business teams, the leadership in the project, that from our perspective, this has been very successful. Again, there are challenges, we know, and we've seen. From our perspective, it's that whole proper planning prevents poor performance, right? It's, are the plans in place to handle these things when they do come up? The contact center was prepared for these things. And so even though it takes longer, it's getting through. So that's just an important statement I want to kind of put out there around that. Overall, for the implementation itself, I wanted to give a little color around kind of how it went to give some comfort or understanding about the process itself. One of the things that we saw was during the decision-making process to actually make the decision to go live. That's something that's critical. And how do you do that, right? When you get to the point where we've talked about going live, right? You see it on a schedule that we've talked about in all the board meetings for years now. It's not that you get to that point and you have to do it or not. We don't have a choice. It's that we need to make sure we're ready. We came into the office here. There was a large group of leaders and business leaders and executives. And to be honest, they grilled the project team and myself and said, are we ready? What data do we have? What are the impacts of the known things that are still outstanding that we're not going to address before Go Live? How is that going to impact the system at Go Live and our business teams when they start to run the system? Those were extensive conversations, again, that were data-based, showing a lot of information around what was still out there. And our recommendation was to Go Live. And that was a decision that was made. But I want to make it clear that those processes and those steps were very thoughtful and extensive and meaningful. And I think, again, obviously led to the right decision there. After Go Live, the focus obviously is turning to production support. We knew that there would be things that would be found. When you start exercising a system of this magnitude and complexity, you're going to start finding the edge cases that you didn't get to testing in the project itself. You could test for 10 years. You're not going to hit a lot of those things. But you will when you're exercising the normal operations. So as those things are found, again, is there the process and plan in place to handle it? And there are these teams of business users, of project, legacy project people, leadership, who really talk about what are each of those things that are being found at a detailed level, right? They're really understanding what it is. Where do we prioritize the fix? Is it something that has to go now because it's going to impact the payroll run that's coming up? So at a detailed level, all of those things are being covered, and they're talking about where they fit and where they're going to get addressed. So again, if the public is looking at this from a challenge perspective, and I wanted to also give context around, everything is being worked. The team is still in place. The business teams are allocating a lot of time and effort. And everybody is trying to figure out how do we get this stuff done as soon as possible, knowing that we're no longer within the walls of a project. It's really important to note that now every decision we make to change the system can potentially impact a member beneficiary and end-user, an internal business user. So we really have to be mindful about what changes we make now. Do we put it in as an emergency fix? Those kind of things have to really be discussed, and they are. So from our perspective, again, being risk managers and very risk averse personnel, it's comforting to us, and we obviously would call that out, but we're seeing the right processes in place and the right conversations happening. And the final thing I wanted to really talk about was that for that payroll run, for the monthly payroll, as we ran up to that, there was extensive conversation around, how are we doing the reviews? How detailed can we get? Are we comfortable with how this is looking? Can we run the trials? Again, the level of conversation was there. The way that the business teams, I call it crashing. They crashed that process. They allocated a lot of personnel in there and worked a lot of hours, had tons of conversations and meetings. It gave us comfort that that run was going to be as accurate as possibly could be. And again, the numbers are kind of bearing that out. So something that is important there is I get asked about morale. The board wants to know how the team's doing. Through all of that, you normally have an elation when you go live with something like this, right? It's just, we've been pushing a project for a long time. We're finally live. It's very exciting. And now we get into the production support side where it starts to get a little bit tedious and challenging, and the hours actually might go up. But every conversation I've been in, the team is positive, right? It's their commitment to their members. They want to get this done. It's how do we do it? It's not, I have to do it. And so again, the culture, the top-down from Ashish and the executive team, Lisa and Julie and Cassandra and Jeff, it's a very positive vibe around this thing, which is, it's just been very important, I think, to being successful. So I wanted to get all that out there that I know Jeff and Anthony can't cover. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. But again, from a risk perspective going forward, there's a lot of work to do. There are a lot of things to fix still. And there's a schedule that has to be followed for those. And so that's something that we'll continue to monitor. And we will continue to update the board on how we're seeing that going, if there's anything that we think needs to be addressed.
Questions? All right, I don't see any questions. Thank you very much. And be sure and let Karen and I know when you think we need to get back on our meeting schedule.
Yeah, thank you so much for your all the support.
Thank you, everyone. Were there any public comments on Item 17?
No public comment for this item.
That was a surprise, okay. All right, that brings us to Item 18, which is just informational. Can we take 19A through E together? Is there anything, anyone needs to pull on that? That's information, 19A through E. Is that a roll call? No? Okay, so without objection, we will approve consent agenda items 19A through E. Any objections? Okay, seeing none, that is approved. Item 20, items referred by committee for board decision. Don't believe there were any. New business information requests. One that I had, I think.
Yep, item nine.
Okay, great. That brings us to 22, the draft agenda for our next meeting.
The only thing I just wanted to highlight is that we're going to be taking the Benefit Connect Operations Update off, and it's going to be within my CEO report. I think we move forward, that's what Ashish said, right? Okay, good. So that'll be coming up, but we might have some other things added on, but that's it so far.
Okay, perfect. Are there any other statements from the public?
Yes, we do have two members of the public that would like to speak. Our first is Doug, followed by Dr. Keaton.
Hello, my name is Doug Orr from the CFT. And I just got back from a three, oh, first of all, I wanted to echo what Dana just said. Rick, you're going to love retirement, okay? Because I just got back from a three-week vacation in Australia, the land of wombats, wallabies, and kangaroos, but also 18 of the 20 most venomous snakes in the world. I should have made this comment yesterday at the Investment Committee, but I was jet-lagged, so I didn't until today. My trip was made possible by Social Security, my 403B account,